May 26th. It's five after six. We'll start with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Byrd?
Here.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Councilmember Zerumba?
Here.
Mayor DeVeard?
Here. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Stephanie Moore with the Ten Mile Christian Church. Every time I say that, I think, did I just say it wrong? Thank you for joining us. We'll invite you to join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you.
My God, we thank you so much for this evening. Some of us have come from a long day where we're wearied and others of us are really energized by the day we've had. And either way, God, we want our attention to be on the items on this agenda because they are important and they are the things that keep our city running smoothly. I thank you that we have officials and community members who are concerned with what goes on and they're invested in bringing about a common vision. And God, we thank you so much that you are attentive to our city and to our people and that we can be led by you and encouraged by you and loved by you. And so, God, we honor you with all that's in us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
On the agenda, on item 5K, the resolution number is 15-0166. On item 5L, the resolution number is 15-0167. And on item 8A and B, the applicant has requested those to continue to June 16th, 2015. On item 9D, the resolution number is 15-0168. And item 11, we need to add paragraph A to that list that will be considered under the executive session. With those additions, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All eyes motion carried. Item five is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Roundtree.
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the previously added resolution numbers. Authorize the clerk to attest and the mayor to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call or roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zerumba?
I think you already got all eyes motion carried. I have the privilege of this next item on 7A, giving a youth scholarship to, I think, a face that should look familiar to City Council. Just to remind our council and certainly to set the stage, our scholarships are funded by the state of the city sponsors. It's really been a long-term commitment to making sure that as we look at the state of the city, we stay committed to the youth of our community. And the youth scholarships are to recognize youth that have generously given their time and talent to our community in some fashion. It's not just about school performance. It is about community involvement and community engagement. And so, we do have a panel of raters that are represented by various stakeholders in our community that we redact the names and some of the identifiers so we can not be biased to any particular person, but really rate them on the merit of what this scholarship was intended to do. And so, this first scholarship award winner is a winner. She's been our chair for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council for the last two years. And certainly, as Katie's been involved with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, we have seen a lot of individual growth and certainly leadership growth. Let me read a few words about Katie. Katie is graduating from Rocky Mountain High School. She has been a leader in the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council for the last four years, serving the last two as chair. Katie has been instrumental in the success of Ball at the Hall and played a major effort in the leadership development of others through fundraising for the National League of Cities that was held in Austin this last fall. In addition to her time in MIAC, Katie is involved in the Mayor's Anti-Drug Coalition, serving on the Strategic Prevention Framework Committee. She has also served as one of the 10 national teen influencers through Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Katie will begin college this fall at Grand Canyon University, and I can't believe she's leaving Meridian. But she hopes to become a high school English teacher. And as we send Katie off with the scholarship, investing in her future because she has invested in our communities, we do hope that she'll find her way back. So I'm trying not to be emotional to use her, continue to use her talents, her passion for this community. And Katie, I will invite you to come forward at this time. And I will tell you that Katie is having her graduation party tonight, and it's going on right now. So we are very privileged to have you here, Katie. And this is not your $1,000 scholarship. We'll send that directly to the university, but just a small token of our appreciation for everything you've done in our community.
I would just like to say thank you to the City Council members for supporting me and MIAC and everything we've done. And I just feel blessed to have been a part of this wonderful city and City Council community. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Katie.
Our second senior, Courtney Kelly, is Courtney here? Thank you for being here, is graduating from Mountain View High School and has a weighted GPA of 4.13. Courtney says music is her passion and has played the violin for as long as she can remember in a variety of orchestras. She has also made volunteering and giving back to the community a priority in her daily life. She has served as a Meridian Food Bank volunteer, participated in the Project Linus to make fleece blankets for the City Light Women and Children Center, served mills at the Boise River of Life Rescue Mission, has been involved in rake up Boise and rake up Meridian, as well as numerous other volunteer activities. Courtney plans to attend the College of Idaho and double major in biology and music. And so, if you'll join me in welcoming Courtney Kelly up front.
I would just like to say I'm deeply honored to be a part of this community and am deeply thankful to all the council members for awarding me the scholarship. Thank you.
Courtney, thank you for joining us. And certainly, as Katie ran off to join her party again, I can tell you, I heard comments from those that did the evaluating of all those that applied for these city scholarships. How outstanding those that applied were. Truly, we have a bright future with the teens from the city of Meridian. And just, Courtney, thank you for joining us, and we wish you nothing but success. And as I mentioned to Katie, we do hope, as you've invested in our community and the community in turn has invested that back into your education, that you'll remember to come home and have your career and raise your family here. So, thanks for joining us. And you don't have to stay if you do not want to. It's not tied to the scholarship funds. Okay, item 8A and B have been requested to continue to June 16th. And that's final plat 15-013 and final plat 15-012.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we continue FP 15-013 and FP 15-012 to June 16th, 2015.
Second.
I have a motion.
And a second to continue these two items to June 16th, 2015. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried. Item 9A is under our Arts Commission, and we have Mary and Hillary here from the Arts Commission to address these next two items. Thank you for joining us. Hillary, I think you're still young enough looking. You could have gotten that scholarship tonight.
Yeah. I went to see if I could get it. I don't know if I have to state my name, but I'm Hillary Bobner, and I'm here to stand for any questions regarding the Arts Commission budget amendment for traffic box wrapping for the not-to-exceed amount of $5,000. You've got the amendment in front of you. This is with MDC, and they're going to reimburse the city $5,000 once we wrap traffic boxes in downtown Meridian.
So, this is a pass-through to make sure that we get the money to the Arts Commission who... Mary, maybe you can talk a little bit about the art that was selected, how it was selected, and give us a little background.
I can. And I believe you will be seeing this art in the coming weeks, maybe even next week, soon. So hopefully, this will just lead up to that for you. But we did do a public call to not only artists, but any art enthusiasts within the community. So we had schoolchildren, all the way up to professional artists, that submitted their artwork for the traffic boxes. A small number of commissioners were selected to go through all of the art. Remind me how many pieces? 200?
There were 259 pieces submitted.
259 pieces of art from our community. And all of it, from what I saw, was great. They didn't get to select all of them, of course. But I think they'll have around 60 for you to see. We're creating a repository of artwork that we are holding for a year, I believe. And we will be able to use that selected artwork as more money becomes available to wrap each traffic box. So, we're really excited about it. I wish I had the pictures here, but you'll get to see them soon. And it's been a great process.
That's great. And that repository will also, if someone in the community would like to sponsor a box, it has, it's art that they can choose from, correct?
Correct, yes.
Excellent. Counsel, any questions?
No, but the repository approach, I think, is a great idea.
Yes.
It gives an opportunity to give everybody a chance to have some of their art displayed. If there's 60 that are really great, that's even better.
We're excited about it. Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Mylum.
Move that we approve the budget amendment for traffic box wrapping and the not-to-exceed amount of $5,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve 9A. Madam Clerk, will you call or roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zerumba?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried. 9B is also a budget amendment for concerts on Broadway.
Yeah. So, concert on Broadway, we're just requesting the sponsorship funds that were already entered through cash receipts and received by four different sponsors who have agreed to sponsor our season this year, which is really great. And those are detailed also in the budget amendment.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
I have none.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
Seeing none, I move that we approve the budget amendment for concerts on Broadway's scholarship funds for the not-to-exceed amount of $15,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9B. Madam Clerk, will you call or roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zerumba?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for joining us.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, real quick, Mary, before you take off, this, I mean, this is a little example of the awesome work that the commission does. And the time and effort that you put into the art box wrap, for example, among other things, is really important. If there was ever any worry or thought that that work goes unappreciated or seen, don't feel that way. For me in particular, it's really important to have that diverse group that's on the commission to be able to make the recommendations, go through the process you went through. It's important for all of us to make the decisions and support the arts. It's part of our strategic plan now in the city. So, we really, really appreciate the efforts on this project and the ones going forward.
Thank you, Councilman Borton. And I should let you all know that it does not feel like we are unseen. With the addition of our brand-new arts administrator, it has actually streamlined our process by a million times. And we know that that decision came from you, and we are thrilled to have Hillary working with us and for us. It has helped so much. It's really, I think you're going to see even more from the Arts Commission this year because of her. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, I'm sure you already know, but Hillary's been a huge advocate and really gives profile to the Arts Commission as well. So, we want to thank the commission and certainly you too, Hillary.
Thank you.
Item 9C is under our economic development. I'll turn this over to Bruce.
Madam Mayor, council members, the lease you have in front of you, of course, is for the New Ventures Lab, and it represents a nice milestone for our downtown, being able to get this co-work, in quotes, incubator for our downtown. We've been working for this for a while. You've previously heard, I think, the broad outlines about this lease. I can certainly review them in a little bit more detail with you, but in broad terms, it's a three-year lease. There will be no rent or a dollar a year for the first year. Year two, the lease rate would be negotiated. And of course, that's a process of comparing notes with Rick Ritter's company to see how they've been able to fill up the spaces available. But the lease in no circumstances would be less than $1,667 a month. And then ditto for year three. There's the negotiation period and that minimum lease. It is important to note that there is no quote-unquote "out" for the city. That is, we're committing to three years. The feeling, of course, from Rick Ritter and his and company was that they're making this investment in our downtown and did not want to, if circumstances conspired to have the rug pull up from under them, that they wouldn't want to be making that commitment either. Really want to appreciate the efforts of our legal staff, Ted and Mr. Neri, for their diligence in crafting this lease and working with the New Ventures Lab. And a special shout-out to Max and Eric for getting the tenant improvements done in a timely fashion. Happy to answer any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Bruce, I got a, you say there's no out for the city. And what does this gentleman start, what kind of skin in the game has he got to start with?
He's bringing, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Byrd, he's bringing in, he's filling the space up. So, there's commitment for furniture fixtures and equipment. It's the usual risk, I think, associated with a new business, minus, of course, the incentive of getting the building filled up for these new budding businesses in our downtown.
And isn't there also a commitment to a certain number of events as well?
Yes. That's correct, Madam Mayor. There are several things built into the lease, not only filling the space up, but having events in that space and the activity that goes along with that.
Mr. Byrd?
Bruce, but he's going to be out some to get the office set up, as you just said.
That's correct.
But isn't he also going to get some rent from these people?
Yes. And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Byrd, yes, I think the idea is that we launch them with this almost-free situation. And as they fill up, then we negotiate that lease based upon how well it's filled up. So, we have that stopgap of the $1,600 and change a month, but it could be more than that based upon the number of tenants that are brought into the space.
Bruce, but do we have anything to say in what he is going to charge the occupants?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Byrd, no. I don't believe we're doing any kind of rent control.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Bruce, to your comment on the commitments, see, I don't see them in the lease as far as the events or maybe a pacing on, and I might be missing it. I understand there's discussion, but I didn't know if there were actual firm deliverables they had to me.
I'm sorry. We have some side conversation going on. Go ahead. I apologize.
Apologies. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I thought that that was in the lease. I'm not seeing it here. There certainly is an understanding, and there are actual events scheduled beyond the groundbreaking for the space, many of which have been advertised. So, I apologize if I characterize that as actually being in the lease.
Madam Mayor, the reason I ask is, are those firm deliverables critical to ensuring the success of the incubator? The idea being, we wanted to facilitate these things to happen, right? These types of end users, end users, to incubate and go on and flourish. Maybe that's done through classes and some of these benchmarks that were important to us to make sure they delivered on.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I think that they're important, but perhaps not, it's not the sort of thing I think you would typically see in a lease. Certainly, there's an understanding that those events make the use, the co-work space use, successful. And so, therefore, the tenant is motivated to do those things.
Do you have anything that should be added to that?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we don't have any proposal or requirement that's attached to the lease. It is just a building lease, sort of the space. If the preference of the council would be to include that as a deliverable, as Councilmember Borton termed it, we certainly can. We haven't had that discussion with this tenant or the prior tenant. I mean, we've just simply leased the space. But if you want to have a deliverable, I guess we can talk to Mr. Ritter. I don't know that he'd have any objection to that. He obviously has a business plan that he's proposed, is why he's here. If you want to tie that to the lease, we could certainly do that.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
On those regards, it's understood to us who are sitting in this room right now. But as we've seen in other situations, if it's not in writing and if it's not part of it, things change and people change and positions change, and that what's understood may not be the same. So, I would prefer that anything that is supposed to be affiliated with this particular lease be in writing, if that's the term.
Anything affiliated, that's pretty broad.
Well, if it's supposed to be part of the agreement, then it should be in writing. And so, if him having a certain amount of events per year or per month or whatever the agreement is, then it should be in writing.
Madam Mayor, to that point, and if there's a business plan, you know, my questions come from not necessarily trying or desiring to micromanage. To, to that point, and if there's a business plan, you know, my questions come from not necessarily trying or desiring to micromanage the specifics on how you make an incubator successful, but really to make sure there's some sort of side words and, and plan. And maybe it's as simple as if there's a, if there is a business plan and they're gonna endeavor to use the premises consistent with the plan, something that gives us some comfort, that we know the direction that the use is taking.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, so are you saying that if they, we have a document, that the, the, the business plan that Mr. Nary referred to earlier for the use of the space and including reference to events, that that be referenced in the lease? Or, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
Yeah. It, it could be an exhibit to it that they're referencing, they're gonna operate consistent with. It gives us some comfort. We all know eighteen months down the road, why we did what we did and how, and are they making progress towards what we all intended to occur?
Well, we asked them to do that, you know, for that very reason, to even start considering this, this arrangement, so.
And, and Madam Mayor, that, that exists, the business plan exists. I don't have it here tonight, and I can't present that to you tonight. But if it's the desire of the Council that, that we bring that forward as a document, at, at our next meeting, we can certainly do that. I'll, I'll work with legal to find out how, the relationship of that to the lease, so that you all have the assurance that you need.
I think as, as Joe mentioned, it can be referenced and attached.
Madam Mayor, I think it'd be a simple fix. If you wanna move this item to next week's agenda, I'll get ahold of Mr. Ritter in the morning. I don't think that's problematic, 'cause I think we are simply gonna take the business plan that he's already proposed, that of what he was going to do with the building, and simply make an addendum attachment to this lease, so. Yeah, we can just put it on next week if they're okay with that.
I think, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Seeing that and with Bruce's permission, I would, I would move that we take these two items, the discussion of the lease, and also the proposed resolution, items 9C and 9D, and move them to the August, or June, I'm getting way ahead, June 2nd meeting, 2016, and bring back the business plan as an attachment.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any, to continue this item until next Tuesday. Hold on a second, favor.
Hi.
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 That list just as coordinated as my request, right? Item 9E is under our Police Department.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I was just telling the chief that it's a good thing I didn't bring a PowerPoint, because right before I came over here, I kicked the side of my computer and snapped my thumb drive in two. So there was no power, there was a PowerPoint on that, but there's no PowerPoint tonight. So you get the, the verbiage version of this. I wanted to give you, the Council, an update on where we're at on the body worn program, body worn camera program. It's been just about eighteen months since we initiated this project at the Police Department. And since then, of course, there's been a lot of national dialogue on body worn cameras and regarding their deployment and use in government setting. And I will say this, in watching the national dialogue in the eighteen months, it's a testament to the city and its leadership here, how we got out in front of this long ago. We had these conversations internally. We saw where this was going. And we're in a good place right now with just about ready to roll it out in the next week or so. So this process has been deliberate. It has been calculated, and it's been scheduled. And it's taken us this long to get here for many reasons. One is that this just isn't something where you put a camera on somebody and start recording. There's a lot that goes into this. There's a lot of thought process. And I've learned a lot in putting this project together. Initially, we were looking at all sorts of cameras and testing them and T and Eing them, and, you know, you get caught up in the camera does this and the camera does that. The cameras all do essentially the same thing. What's important is how you manage the data, how you store the data, how you manage the technology, how you manage the costs, how you manage the policy. Because technology often doesn't fail. It's the management of it that does. And so we spent a lot of time behind the scenes, building those programs and understanding the functionality of it. And so it's kinda brought us to this point where next week, we're gonna start out in, in phases, rolling out the camera program. And one of the things we, we wanted to look at and work with legal on is our retention rates of this, this video. Certainly, that's not something that we take lightly when you're recording the public. We wanna make sure that we're retaining it for the proper period of time to adjudicate cases, to settle any claims that may come against the city, but at the same time, if it's not something we need, then it's something that we need to get rid of. So we spent a lot of time doing that. We identified a lot of workflow issues with the officers. We didn't want to have them spending a great amount of time tagging these videos and going through all the cumbersome moving videos here to there and docking and all this, because it, it wastes times, it wastes resources. We want them on the streets. We want them in the community. So we studied that, and we came up with what you think is a very good system of downloading the videos, so it's just almost errorless. We looked at the technology life cycle. All technology has a life cycle, and you have to understand that, because at some point, you have to replace it, you have to replenish it. We took a hard look at that, and we, we did a five-year contract with this company. And at year two and a half, they're gonna come in and replenish everything we have and give us all brand-new stuff. And at year five, they will do the same thing. It's important, because technology changes so quickly and so rapidly, we, you just can't keep up with this. So we took a hard look at making sure that we were leveraging our dollars wisely and that we were on top of this for the next foreseeable future, so we could stay within the technology. We had to look at access. Who would have access to what? Who has permissions to what? What does the storage look like? What is the training gonna look like? Who's gonna manage it? Who's gonna do the redaction? Who's gonna do the public information requests? These are all things that have to be answered behind the scenes to make this program run. What about weighing the privacy and the transparency together? It's very important. We have to balance that. We wanna be very transparent as an organization, but we also have to balance privacy as well. It took a long time to get through that, and I have to, to thank Bill Nary's office, especially Emily Kane, who spent, I don't know, countless hours with me side by side, working on retention rates, state statutes, city ordinances, and what we should be doing, and, and the best balance of how long we need to keep these. Some of the other stakeholders that I've reached out to is, is we reached out to the ACLU. I wanted their feedback. I wanted to know what it is they thought of our policy and how we're doing business here. And I received that feedback, and I think we're real close. I think we're real close. I reached out to ICRA, wanted to understand what was important to them. I've reached out to the Ada County paramedics, because there's gonna be times where we have body worn cameras and we're back in the paramedic wagon with somebody. I reached out to our fire department and provided some training for them. We reached out to St. Luke's in town. I met with their folks and let them know what was going on. They understand that across the nation and all their hospitals, this is gonna be the new normal, where officers are showing up for incidents inside the hospitals and they're running video. You know, there's, there's a lot to take in there, because you have doctors and nurses and patients and everything, and it's just, it's a lot to take in. So we reached out to them and talked with them. We met with all other law enforcement agencies that we interact with on a daily basis to let them know what we were doing. So I think it was really important that we, through that outreach, everybody understands what the expectations and what we're doing. So we did a lot of that. And what we did learn too is there are limitations to these cameras. It's not a perfect system. There is no such thing as a perfect system. It's, it's simply a tool that we will use for risk management, for evidence collection. But it's not a perfect tool by any means, and, and, and to kinda put it in perspective, it's a camera. It sits, it sits on the body. It's not an eye tracker. It doesn't move with your eyes. It just sits there. So depending on where your body's at and how it looks and where it's at, you may get some recording, you may not. It only picks up sound and video. It doesn't pick up, you know, the smell in a room. It doesn't pick up what an officer's feeling or what their emotions are. It doesn't, it doesn't pick up those little other senses. The camera only picks up seventy-five degrees, not three hundred and sixty. So, and the, from time to time, the cameras will get blocked. It's kinda like a sporting event, is the best way I can explain it. If you've ever watched sports, how many camera angles you have to see before they, you know, can recognize, well, it's a fumble or a touchdown? That's not how this works. You have one camera and one angle. It's not a sporting event. And so I always try and put it in perspective when I'm training people and talking to prosecutors and such, 'cause they, I wanna make sure that the bar is set right. I wanna make sure they understand that when they're getting these things, that they're like, well, how come I can't see it from here and here and here? Because it's just a camera. It just sits on the, on the collar. So, and judging distances can be difficult on cameras when you're looking at video. And, and certainly, even if there's video, we don't all agree in what we see. Everybody has biases and opinions, and so we could all get into a room and watch a video, and everybody's gonna interpret it differently, so it won't answer all our questions. But it's, it's gonna be very successful. I think we've done a good job. I'm excited for it, finally get it done and behind me, so I can move on to the next project. And cameras will never replace good police work. It will never replace being good to our citizens. It will never replace going out in the community and talking to people. It's just another tool. So we're gonna continue to do all those things that is expected of us. So for that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott, and I appreciate the extensive outreach that you've had in, in looking from every angle and every viewpoint to make sure that we're considering everything as we look to roll this out. I, I think it's, it's very judicial on what you've done and, and wanna thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
Scott, you mentioned that you're gonna have an update of your stuff in two and a half years. And you gave us a list of mostly equipment. Does that also apply to software? And the idea that the software might have to have a shelf life of a number of years, based on how long you're going to be retaining the data?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Roundtree, yeah, it's a great question, yes. Everything that's, that's, it's the software, the storage, everything that comes with it, the hardware, we're, we're locked in on those pricings for five years, and so we again go back to what's the right thing to do with the dollars here? 'Cause it can, this kinda stuff can get away from you pretty quickly.
Yeah. Thank you.
And you've been working with IT.
Yes.
Almost as extensively as Emily Kane, yeah.
I, I apologize for, Dave and, and Mike Tanner have been fantastic behind the scenes. I mean, they've been there through the very beginning of this and deploying it, and they're always fantastic to work with. I, I, I can't complain about the IT department ever. Even when my computer doesn't work, I don't. Because I'll never get it again.
Yeah, we already know. You break it off. Okay, I'm Mr. Cavanagh.
Scott, appreciate the update. Couple of just clarification points, specifically related to the equipment. Ultimately, does the city retain ownership of that equipment, or does the vendor retain ownership of that equipment? At the end of the five years, if we said we wanna go with somebody else, do they take all the equipment back, or is that, that our own equipment?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, and that's our equipment. We own it. It's ours, and they're just replenishing it. So at the end of the five years, if we wanna hang on to it, we can hang on to it. If we decide we wanna go with another vendor, then we just own the equipment. We'll go a different route.
Madam Mayor, follow-up. Related to the video, does this contractor that we're working with, do they have any ownership of any of the video that we capture? Are they able to monitor it, retain it, use it for any of their own purposes, or is it our equipment, our video, and it stays with us?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, another fantastic question. It's almost like you have a father that's an officer. It's, it, it is ours. The video is actually, when it's docked at night, it's encrypted and goes into a queue that belongs to the officer, so only the officer has access to their own videos. Other officers can't see other officers' videos. It's all encrypted. It can't be deleted or edited, and we control the permissions in the program. We control who we allow into those, those sites and what level of permission we give them. And there's an audit trail that comes with every camera, so anytime someone opens up a video, touches it, does anything to it, there's an audit trail, and it tracks all the way down to the IP address of the computer they're doing it from.
Mayor, one more. Madam, one more question? Scott, maybe you touched on this, and I just missed it, but what is our retention rate? How long are we gonna hold this video for?
Sure, sure. Madam Mayor, Mr. Cavanagh, so for the major cases, the way we settled out is, is the, the top major cases, your terrorism, your murders and such, we'll keep those for a hundred years. For all other cases, all other felonies, your, your, your run-of-the-mill misdemeanors and such like that, that's three years or until the case is adjudicated. If the case is adjudicated within a year, as long as there's no appeal, then we will remove the video and it goes away. If there is no enforcement action, and these would be your typical, a, a traffic stop is made by an officer, and we warn the citizen for speeding, but there's no citation tied to it or no, no case tied to it at all for adjudication purposes, we will keep that for two hundred and ten days. And that may seem like an odd number, but ICRA says their tort claim period's a hundred and eighty days, and they wanted a little balance on the end in case something happened. So at two hundred and ten days, no enforcement action, no kind of case goes away. It's deleted out of the system. And then if there's any errors that, that come up, an officer accidentally turns it on, you know, while they're in the car or, I don't know, in the break room, then we, we delete those within fourteen days. We have no need to keep those. And that's for, we don't need to keep those videos, and it's for cost containment as well.
Madam Mayor, sorry, one more question. Now, now I've got a, a mind blank. I'm good now, I guess, for now.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Scott, where does the city of Meridian sit relative to the sister agencies around us with the use of body worn cameras? Implementation scheduling, et cetera?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Mr. Borton, yeah, that's, that's a great question. So we're ahead of Boise. The Ada County's been rolled out for about eight months. And I can't speak to Garden City. I know that they were testing and evaluating cameras. I feel pretty comfortable telling you, by this time next year, there probably won't be an agency in Ada or Canyon County that isn't in the body worn camera business. It's just everybody's trending that way. Boise will probably be the last city to, to get on board with it. They've been slow to move. And we've been slow to move too, but it's been deliberate and planned that way. So we're right there.
Okay. Madam Mayor, sorry, it came back.
Ah.
Scott, so I know that we've had some of our officers that have been piloting this. I'm just curious about the amount of their time. You know, you touched on that briefly, and it sounds like if they're, they're logging, okay, I had, you know, five traffic stops and, oh, I had my camera on when I was launching. Need to delete that part out. How much time are they spending on their shift, going through and, and logging and categorizing each of these videos?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Cavanagh, good question. We, when we studied the workflow, we, we identified early on when we were T and E and that officers were spending what we felt was too much time tagging and, and messing around with the videos to try and get them in their proper places. And so we recognized that, and Mike Tanner actually helped lead building a, a parsing system that we interface with, with TASER at night. And when the officers dock their cameras, everything is tagged and automatically put in the categories behind the scenes at night after they go home. It's a very slick system. We're just finishing the beta testing this week. So to answer your question, minutes, they have to come in and write reports anyways. So they will pull up, plug the camera into the tower, and they will play the video while they're typing their report. But all the tagging and everything, once we get the beta testing done, is all done behind the scenes. They don't have to mess with that anymore.
Thanks.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Mike Tanner's genius.
Don't tell people that. Okay, anything, any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Byrd.
Just to add to what you stated earlier, Scott, you and the chief and all your people, I'm so happy that you reached out to everybody before we jumped into this, to make sure that we do it right and we don't have the problems that other places have, and I, I certainly appreciate that.
Yeah, and it's been a group effort. It hasn't been me. I mean, your leadership and, and understanding what our needs were, the leadership from the Police Department, the chief, the deputy chief, and IT, legal, there's, there's been a lot of players at this table. It isn't just me. I've just been the facilitator in managing the program and getting it here. But we've worked with the Ada County Prosecutor's Office, the Boise City Prosecutor's Office. I mean, everybody's been there. I've worked with Jan Bennetts and Terry Dearden and, and all of them, and, and so they understand, because it affects them. It affects other people, and if it affects other people, you have to listen to what they have to say. So I, it was important to me, 'cause this is a big deal. We've even, we've even, we even reached out to the media, done several media spots with them, to talk to them about what our limitations are in the programs too, so.
Great. Well, thank you for the update, Mrs.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
To that point, Scott, you probably do this, but certainly thank all those agencies that, that help and share information. You know, this valley's blessed to be cooperative in that regard and help each other out, and they're gonna be asking us, as they implement their cameras or other systems they're gonna use, and we'll cooperate with them. It's really valuable.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Borton, I, just this past week, last week, there was a contingent of IT, human resource, attorneys, and command staff from Twin Falls PD that came. of IT, human resource, attorneys, and command staff from Twin Falls PD that came up and met with me, because they are writing a grant and they're going to body worn cameras, and they wanted to see our program. They had heard through the chief what we had done and some of the neat things we had done with tagging and our policy and our outreach. And they wanted to know everything about it and kind of copy and mold what we did. So that's a testament to the leadership in front of me and this department. And it's been a good journey, because over the last few years, if you've all sat here, we've completely redone our policy manual, we've revamped our training program, we brought in body worn cameras, I mean, we've done the LexiPaul stuff, and we've got accredited through the state of Idaho, and we've done some fantastic things over there. And this department has been well-versed in professionalizing itself over the last few years with the certifications and everything. So it's made me proud to work for.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Item number ten, future meeting topics. Seeing, and counsel, I would just, I do want to point out, last week, the, during EMS week, Ada County paramedics recognized the city under their community heroes section for our Heart Safe Initiative. And certainly appreciate Deputy Chief Jones for his leadership in this, and certainly the passion that he continues to encourage others to join in. And I had Mr. Sidaway and Chief Levy and Chief Niemeyer and Deputy Chief Jones, and I were there to receive the award on behalf of our community. And it was interesting, and this is something I need to share for Deputy Chief Jones in terms of, after our memorial service at the Rock of Honor yesterday, I had a woman come up and give her appreciation to the AED program. In particular, that those AEDs are now on our police, in our police patrol cars. And she lost her husband over a year ago to a heart event, and the first responder was a police officer. He knew CPR, but he did not have the AED that could have saved those moments that might have increased his survivability of that event. So she was just so appreciative of what the city's doing in those Heart Safe initiatives and being recognized by the Ada County paramedics and their, their program and their statements in terms of hoping that other communities follow suit. And we made an important connection there with St. Luke's as well, that has a serious interest in what we're doing and wants to partner. So just wanted to share that with you. And in particular, since Chief Jones was here, that we could give recognition to your leadership.
Thank you very much.
So thank you. Okay, item eleven is executive session, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Byrd?
I move to go into executive session, as per State Code six, seven, two, three, four, five, one A, one D, one F.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavner?
Hi.
Councilmember Mylum?
Hi.
Councilmember Byrd?
Hi.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Hi.
Councilmember Borton?
Hi.
Councilmember Zerema?
Hi.
Like it's lonely and looking for-